Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kenny?
Here.
Jim Oliver?
Present.
Make a motion, go to the front.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yeah.
Councilmember Robell?
Yes.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Robell?
Here.
Jim Oliver?
Present.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice on Tuesday, this is the first public important meeting of the evening.
Is it two more minutes?
Regular meeting of January 12th.
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For instance, last meeting, I reviewed the redevelopment agreement between the township and Levin Franklin Redeveloper, that's the Jergian or Roche site, depending on how old you are and how you want to refer to it, with our town attorney, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Jim Ray from McElroy, Deitch and Mulvaney, and Mr. Frank DiLorenzo, our construction official. We also had an opportunity to review the redevelopment agreement between the township and 520 Bellaville LLC, that's a Soho property, again with Mr. Murphy, Mayor Kimball, Councilman Kennedy, construction official DiLorenzo, Mr. Paul Gemis, the attorney for the developer, and Mr. Steve and George Valiotis. And I'd like to report that I, Mr. Murphy and the attorneys involved did an excellent job on those, it was a pleasure going through them, and we got through them relatively quickly. So, job well done. On February 15th, which was President's Day holiday, we had between two and three inches of snow, we sent the salters out, our DPW again did an excellent job, they went out about 1:00 PM, they did the main streets and then the hills. On 16th, which was the next day, at 6:30 AM, we again had assault the mains and the hills again because it was icy, and our crews also cleaned town hall, the rec house and the library. Also on the 16th, we lowered all town plaques to have staff in honor of Justice Scalia and his passing. On the 17th, we had an eight-inch water main break at 528 Franklin Avenue. On the 18th, we, I forwarded a copy of the safer grant application, which Mayor and I were just speaking with, with the police chief, to the police chief who fortunately already had it, and the application date for that is between February 22nd and March 25th, so I'm sure we will be applying on the 18th. Also, our property tax and water billing payment system went live online, put a little bit of a ruckus, but overall it was handled very well by our finance department and we're doing the law. On Friday, the 19th, Captain Messy advised me that a FEMA pre-disaster mitigation and flood mitigation assistance grant was available, and the application dates for that is between March 15th and June 15th, so we'll be investigating that, I'll report back to you. On Monday the 22nd, I received a petition from the residents of Walnut Street to pay their street, which is in very poor condition. So I'll be speaking with Mr. Haritz about that and see what we can do to help remedy that. I also have a request from St. Anthony's Church concerning the feast, which the clerk will put on at the next meeting. That's all I have.
Can you go ahead?
No.
Yeah, I just have a few things. Very happy to say that I see on the agenda we have a binge for the Civil Aid Firehouse. Been a long time coming, but it looks like it's coming to fruition. Also, well, I know that the roof will be done and bathrooms and whatever, so I'm sure that the men will be very happy to hear that we're going to take care of that, and I'm happy to. There's no one more than me that wants the Civil Aid Firehouse or the Friendly House thing. Also, on Essex County seniors program, they have krill, they have cafes in all the parks in the municipalities, so people could have nutritious meals that can't afford to do it. So I'm looking into that possibility. I found out Bellville does not have one because they did not want one, and a few people told me they didn't want it in the senior center, so I'm sure we could find another place, but there are people out here starving that need nutritious meals, so I will be looking into them. Also, today I took a tour with our town manager, Mr. Tucci, and Mr. DiLorenzo, and we looked over the Friendly House. And it's a big, big building, but Mr. Tucci did come up with a lot of good ideas, and I think it's really going to work very well. Thank you.
If I might, the Friendly House, the structure was done in an excellent fashion, and there's a lot of possibilities here for a lot of activities. It can go back to being a neighborhood recreation center, it can be used for senior citizen activities, or whatever we want. It provides a lot of potential, it's a nice, big, open room, we need to outfit it a little bit, so we're looking into funding for that and seeing what the needs are, and I'll be reviewing, not only the council, but the mayor, and the entire council as to what we want to do there, so we can get that back online, or if you can enjoy it.
Oh, also, we're going to have the voting there. I did spoke to, I spoke, I did speak to Kelly about that, and she was going to talk with Linda Von Nessing, so we can have the voting at the new Friendly House, which would be wonderful. That's all I have.
Marv, can you tell us on Drummond and Main Street, the water main break over there with the town engineer?
Yes, I had a conversation with Tom Haritz, it's a very deep main, he's getting prices. If he's not successful in the relatively near future, hopefully by the end of this week, I'm going to suggest to him that maybe we declare it an emergency, all right, and we go out for an emergency bid on that. But I know he's working on, he's moving as fast as he can, just sometimes people don't get back in as quick as they'd like.
Yeah. What's that, 20 something feet deep?
Yes, yes, well beyond our capability.
Yeah. Right though, what is that, about 20 something feet deep?
Yeah, plus the river, the tide.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just a bad location, it's a tricky job.
Okay. Who's Steve?
Hello, Mr. Manager. The, is it possible to have the tax assessor come to our next meeting? As reference to Forest Hills appeal, there's a couple other things I think he wants to bring us up to date on, which I think everybody should hear that.
I think, I think that's an excellent idea. Kevin Esposito has his hands on the pulse of that litigation and some other things that he'd like to discuss with us, and he would be, he's the best person to come forward and explain to us exactly what the status is. I'll advise him that.
Excuse me, Steve, use your mic, please.
Yeah, just keep a surprise of what's going on with the Walnut Street as well, and how, if Tom can find some money at the end of this year's budget, we could use it.
I will.
Can you repeat it?
Still there?
Do you want the assessor to do something?
Yeah, I want the assessor to come and visit us.
For what?
To talk about the Forest Hills appeal and a couple other appeals we have out there.
Litigation with Forest.
Litigation.
There's litigation out there with Forest Hill.
And then Walnut, Walnut Street, we want to see what's going on, see if there's some money at the end of the year that, you know, throw all these things on, that we possibly should.
I'll be moved.
It's a mess. Okay?
Thanks, Marv.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
A request received from the Vietcom Veterans of America, Chapter 510, for permission to conduct attack there on March 19th.
Make a motion, Phil, through it.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
And a request received from the Los Angeles Association for permission to use the municipal stadium football field on Saturdays and Sundays from March 15th to June 22nd, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and for practice on Mondays through Friday from 5:00 AM to 9:30, with a request to waive the fees, and a request from the Ironbound Soccer to use the field on March 18th and 20th, with pending fees.
Make a motion, approve it, as long as it doesn't interfere with anything else going on at the stadium.
I'll definitely second it. I know, Tom, that you were going to work on some stuff as far as like insurance certificates, the constraints relative to the school and rec programs, that kind of stuff, for the soccer people.
The fees are in the ordinance, but they have to produce a certificate of insurance with the township members and name insurer on the insurance before they take the field.
Okay.
And we've had people do this almost at the last minute, but they have to do it.
And the high school and rec programs to...
Take precedent.
Say again, Councilman?
The high school and recreation programs for the town take precedent.
High school and the rec program take precedence over anybody. And one of the last pieces was the whole thing of cleanup, we talked about, you know, we want to make sure that if they clean up after they're done, they don't leave everything all over the place, so this is kind of what we're trying to do.
We wanted that in hand before they took the field.
Okay.
And you'll work on the agreement?
You're going to work on some sort of agreement for this?
We have agreements.
Right.
You know, from this, we don't have the name of, the name of a responsible party, you know, we need that stuff.
Okay. We'll wish you, Marv, with that step forward.
We'll get that, we can request the manager to get it.
So what I'm assuming is Adelaide used to handle that, whether or not Rome will be or...
I'll be the new Adelaide.
Okay. Just to, you know, just to get the, you know, to do the groundwork on it, you know, to get the name of the, you know, the corporation and...
Okay.
Click rule.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Make a motion, opening up public participation?
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Phil, it's right down town, we have a prospect avenue. If you intend to do Walnut Street, please fix the infrastructure first before you pave it, just so we don't have any water main breaks and stuff under it. So if you would look into that too, before you do any paving of it, okay? And Marie talked about people starving. I'll tell you a little story, a woman called my home last week, she wanted to know what temperature she could keep her thermostat on to her pipe floor freeze. People out there can't afford to even live in their own homes. You've got to do something not to increase taxes and not to give out big contracts to employees, because it is killing the people in the town. They can't even afford to eat, you go shopping in the food store, and they walk around and say, "Oh, I can't buy this this week, oh, maybe I won't buy this loaf of bread this week." It really gets sickening to see people have to walk around and deprive themselves of eating food and even keeping their houses warm because they can't afford to pay the taxes in this town. So please, when the budget comes up, please go over with a fine tooth comb and cut it some way so people can afford to stay in their homes. Thank you.
Frank Fleischman, 132 Franklin Street. Resolution number three, the resolution authorized the township engineer prepare bid documents and advertise and receive bids for the Civil Aid Firehouse. I take it this means that we're actually behind renovating the station and not tearing it down, which is good. I was under the impression, and maybe I'm mistaken, that these bid documents were prepared last year over the summer. Am I incorrect?
I don't think, I didn't see any, sir.
Now, is this for just the roof as Councilman Burke had mentioned, or is this for the whole whole magilla?
This is just the roof.
This, this is the first step, this is just for the roof. So our intention is to seal up the building, all right, to replace the roof, and then from there move on to the next step, which could be either the floor or the bathrooms to get it ready.
Okay. Obviously, I understand it's the winter, so you probably won't be able to start the thing, you know, right away, but I'm assuming that work will start in the spring.
I would hope by the end of March, weather permitting, which would fall nicely with any bidding procedure, any documents that have to be drawn, and notification out to the public.
Okay. Well, I consider it's a down payment on something that should have been done quite some time ago, so I just hope things move forward. Thank you.
Vic Mufuchi, 61 Continental, through the chair. Marv mentioned the redevelopment plan for Soho property, which part of the property is impervent to?
The house.
The building.
The building, it's up, yes.
And if possible, could you put a request to the county to repay Franklin Avenue between Berkeley Avenue and Bellville Avenue? I don't know if it's the town or the county was patching some hot holes the other day, but it's still in terrible shape. Thank you. Mr. Vintain, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, the, Benny Clark or something, I don't know, the officer who handles the community service people?
Carnicella.
Carnicella, whatever it is, I'd just like the public to say, this guy is fantastic. He takes care of the men, but he works, he works right, they're cutting shrubs, he's cutting shrubs, they're digging ditches, he's digging ditches, you know? And it's really good to see somebody doing that kind of work, and I think he should be complimented for that.
Well, he did, I think we gave him a fuck.
We did.
We gave him a fuck, we just wanted to see.
Mayor should be pointed out, anyone that the men aren't here, he comes and works.
Yes, he's, he's a wonderful person.
Himself.
And people notice that. You know, at the last meeting, when I was addressing Mr. Tucci's contract, I was reading some of the stipulation in the contract, and I was told, "I don't know where you got that contract, that's not in, that's not in," you know, and all this stuff. Well, I got the new contract that you all signed. It's exactly the same, there's only eight words taken out, I have both contracts here, the eight words were, however, not more, a 25-hour deal. So, you know, I don't know what you, what I was told last week as I was reading it, "Oh, I don't know where you got that contract, that's not in, that's not in," and I still objected, 28 vacation days for an acting town manager. And the sick days, and according to the way you read the contract, when he leaves, he's going to get reimbursed for them, up to a maximum $15,000. There's an interim, an acting town manager. And I'm very disappointed, Mr. Nifary is not here again, maybe sick, maybe that's sick again, but it appears to be, this is just stalling the advertisement for a new town manager to keep Mr. Tucci on.
It's gone on today.
There's no reason that...
It's gone on today. They have it on under the business.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Tucci, I think you're going to do a good job, there's a problem we haven't had for many years, maybe you can help us correct it with your expertise. I called DCA Local Government Services last week. It used to be the budget has to be introduced by February 20th, this year they extended. The budget has to be introduced by March 18th, and has to be approved by April 20th. We in Bellville, especially if you're landlocked, you don't know how to make up leases, we don't get our introduced budget till August, September, sometimes October. So I hope with your great expertise, by March 18th, you will have an introduced budget. And it's not hard, because basically as a commissioner, and you know as a commissioner, I was basically the town manager of my department. And in December, I said, "All my department heads, I want your budget in my desk January 1st." So there's no reason for it. And I also, which I brought up to this council, it don't matter what state aid, because there's a budget amendment process. So you introduce your budget, what you need for a year, if down the road, say in May and June, you get more or less, you amend the budget. So the excuse that we don't know how much state aid we get is not an excuse, and now local governors, they agree with me, that's not an excuse for introducing your budget. Introduce, and it's in pain.
Who made that excuse?
Previous town or previous town manager.
Oh, okay. I just want to clarify that those words came out of my mouth.
We don't know, there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of unknowns. But you're introduced, but you know how many people are payroll, you know what DPW needs, you know what finance needs and all that, that budget must be introduced March 18th. And I hope with all your good expertise, we finally can have a budget introduced on time. And then we'll debate and see whether we're going to improve it.
Of course, that's possible.
But at least the people know we have a starting document to begin with.
Well, Mayor, considering my answer, I have everyone's budget, all right, and I've begun going through them, all right? And once I go through them and I familiarize myself with them, I'll be meeting with the Budget Committee to go through them again. However, I am waiting, all right, for the end of the 15 years for the books to be finalized and totally reconciled, because that's not done yet. So I don't know how much money we're going to have from 2015 that's going to be cashed out that we can utilize in this budget. But I understand, I hear what you're saying.
We have the amendment process.
We have the amendment process, but I also want me to know, before I start budgeting dollars, where I need to cut and what I have to work with. Because the last thing we want to do is start writing checks and making appropriations with money that we don't have.
I'll be played the silly, I know where it's at.
I'm going to take you up on that.
Now, as we saw, the Star Ledger put out an article about the average property taxes, and Bellville averaged 8,800, and it's like the fifth lowest in that city county, but that is not true. I called the local reporter, a reporter, and I explained, and a reporter wasn't even aware of this. It makes it seem like taxes are only 8,800, but it's more than that. Now, here's my tax bill, on my whole, my tax is 8,548. But if you go halfway down your tax bill, there's a line, state aid used to offset property taxes. And I know what state aid is, because last week I did my income taxes, and I pay income tax to the state, I pay sales tax to the state, I pay registration fees, I pay contractors' license fees, I pay a ton of money to the state. So when I send it down to the state, then they take a lot of it, and they send it back to you, right, to offset a budget, and you guys have spent it. So on my house that I live in, it comes to $11,996, $12,000 on just my property. My commercial property is $10,000, and the state aid for that property is 4,100. So that's $14,289. Now, when you look at it and you say, "Oh, yeah, you're paying low," imagine if you lived in North Corwell. Finally, I did a job in North Corwell, good customer, a good friend of mine, I said, "Do you mind placing your tax bill here?" Well, he's got, I have 3,700, 37 by 100, little 3,700 square foot lot. He's got a half acre, which is about 22,000 square, five and a half times. He's got a house twice the size of mine, just the great room is like 25, 30, all right, his great room, beautiful lardo. He's paying $12,000 in taxes, but his state aid, because Marv, is only $1,000. So with my property, my little thing here, my little house, is $12,000, he's got this beautiful place up there for only $13,000 effective, only $1,000 more. So before you people start campaigning and bragging about, "Oh, how low local property taxes are," it ain't so. You've got to combine those two things, and everybody has the information in their home. All you got to do is, is write halfway down before the tear off, state aid used to offset local property taxes for this property on this parcel. So I hope everybody reads that and know the truth about how much you're really spending in your inflated budget, I think it's $62 million last year.
Thank you, Mayor.
And finally, in regards to the redevelopment, Mr. Tucci, are there any pilot programs in there?
Here, we haven't, we haven't been to that point yet, but as I'm sure you're aware, because you've been around for a long time, most developers, all right, will come in and ask for a pilot program. And it's not uncommon for that to happen, it happens all the time, and if and when that happens, we're going to evaluate that, and we'll present our best recommendations to the mayor.
I hope we don't do, because I have a newspaper article where there's a guy who does not agree with tax abatement, and in writing, he reported, and I applaud him, it happened to be our Mayor Kimball, all right, in regards to another project. But it would be a case where I do agree pilots for double taxpayers. Why don't you give us a fixed deal for 30 years at a fixed amount of property, but not the 12th developer?
You're talking two different things, though, Ben. You're talking tax abatement, which usually runs 30 years, and then you're talking about a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. So there's two separate things, and again, depending on what we're presented with, the town attorney and I and the fire finance people, all right, are going to go over that, and we're going to make our best recommendations to the mayor and council, and ultimately...
Well, we had one developer stand right here about six months ago, and saying publicly he wanted a pilot, 100,000, pilot, 100,000 for 30 years. So he asked for a 30-year pilot, publicly he asked for it.
And listen, it's not, it's not uncommon for them to ask, we all ask for things, we don't always get them.
And finally, there's one more thing, this is in the paper, Fair Lawn hires a grant rider, happened to be our grant rider, but they're a little better bargaining, look what they did. They don't pay them anymore.
We don't have a grant rider.
Oh, okay, the grant rider we had. But anyway, here's a good thing, here's what they did, they hired a job, Bruno, Bruno said this company does not normally work on a percentage basis, but will honor the council's request. He only gets paid if he gets the grants. So if we get a new grant rider, that's a good thing to do, what they did over there, instead of giving them a flat fee, and half, more than half of your grants, you don't need a grant rider, like for the recycling grant, it's based on your tonnage. The tree grant that we used to get is based on your population and demographics. So most of these things I used to do, some of them were a prepaid form to fill out, we don't need a grant rider. The $10,000 tree grant, I did every year, and the whole 10,000 were for trees. I got out, and you gave it to Bruno, and he took 20%. So we got 10,000 for a simple form, and he got 2,000, so we had 2,000 less trees to plant. So please, let's keep that in mind and forget the pilots.
Well, I can assure you, maybe call the state and tell them we don't want that much state aid.
Is that, is that state aid for both, education?
Not only kids.
It's, it's, it's the, the counter aid, which is the combined state aid, and it's the energy tax dollars, all right? So you're the two of them, I mean, state aid, I mean, it's...
I did testify that we don't want the state aid.
Hi, my name is Kevin Hill, I live at 725 Drummond. There's an issue here with the snow in Bellville, the sides, I understand the main streets get cleared, what about the residential? Most of them are two-way streets, the way they plow down, they make it a one-way. And it becomes an issue every year. And for the elderly, the handicapped, it makes a problem for even like a fire truck or ambulance, even to get down on streets, you know, to get care of everybody, and that's a big issue down here.
So we do have a problem, because we allow full-size street parking, except on emergency streets, so there definitely is a problem with our power here, but if the people can't get their cars off the street, there's no place to put them. There was three feet of snow. There was three feet of snow. I know, I know. This was inside Bridgeburg. Are you talking inside Bridgeburg?
No, I'm talking about like, I mean, if you're driving, you know, if you're going down, it becomes ice, and then it becomes, you know, as a driver, twitches of ice, becomes a hazard, you know, and the trucks can't get down there, you know, to even do something where it becomes ice.
Well, our public works, they did a good job for what they had to deal with, like I said, there's parking on both sides of the street.
Correct.
So what, I mean, that's the issue.
I mean, if cars would have got, if they got them off the street where they could plow, I don't know.
Yeah, if they got them off the street, but there's no place to put them, that's the problem. The people have no place to put their cars.
Because once the plows go down, and then it puts the cars in a spot, I mean, with the three feet of snow, you can't get your car out after the plow goes down there, you know, and it becomes an issue, and...
That's why in certain streets, we have emergency streets that, that we allow no parking, and if there's cars parked on there, they are towed, and then we, we get as close to the curb as we can.
Yeah, that's on the main street, but I'm talking about the residential streets, like the side streets, which is a two-way street.
If they would move, most would have... If they would move their cars, the plows would take care of them, sir.
I'm just saying, so...
We did, we did a reverse 911 to try to get people as best as possible, like Ray said, it's difficult, we don't have a police department.
Why is it that sometimes we plow real good in summer? This, this last snowstorm? This last snowstorm? Some of the side streets were plowed beautifully. No snow at all on the streets.
Because the people throw the snow in the middle of the street when they shove their cars out. That's why some of the streets.
Some of the streets, like Ray was saying, are emergency streets that you can't even park on. When you can't park on, you know, especially the emergency access street, they should be plowed, they won't be plowed like that.
Well, when you plow, when you get plowed in, there's nowhere to put the snow after you got plowed in, so where are you gonna put it? You know, you gotta get your car out, you know?
This was in three feet of snow.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you know, like one of them was on Bell Street. Plow just came down twice within the time.
After I plowed my car out, they plowed my car out. I mean, I gotta go to work. When I'm out there, every two hours, show on my car, only to turn around and find folks who don't want to get us. Go to work, you guys enjoy that, go home.
Arlingtonshire 75 Rossmore Place. I live on Rossmore and Hornbwell. And obviously, because people can't park on Jerome Avenue with your cars removed, I have to say, public works makes every attempt it can to where we have openings to push the snow. But, you know, we're densely populated. It's on the residential streets. You can't move those cars because again, we have people who have to relocate their cars. I have to give credit to public works. I think that they work day and night and they did the best possible job they could. They were hand digging out crosswalks to make sure that the kids could go to school because I saw the job that they were doing. And it was an unusual storm, but I think that our public works workers I know worked nonstop to the point where some of them were probably near exhaustion. But what are we gonna do? We've got narrow streets. And as my only biggest concern is to make sure that those crosswalks are cleared when we finally do open the schools and the kids can get across because it wasn't public works, it was someone else. It was somebody else who had a private plow who took the snow and pushed it across near my crosswalk on the corner where I was into my neighbor's crosswalk across the way to clear an area. But it was, there was so much that we could not physically dig it out. But it wasn't a public works issue. It was some other people who have plows are also abusing the situation.
Thank you. Jeff.
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut. Through the chair, Mayor, Mr. Tucci, you were saying that there were pilots and abatements that were being considered typically with large-scale development. These still are diversion of our tax dollars away from the township to either pay for the development through pilot programs or to simply afford the money to go on with the project to better the town. But these are monies that are diverted away. When are they not used almost exclusively for residential?
They're not, these are not dollars to matter that are diverted away in a pilot. What happens in a pilot, the municipality gets their taxes and the municipality has the choice whether or not to pay the school their portion of the taxes. And the entity that doesn't get the tax money is the county. So in some instances.
5% and having the township.
Sometimes.
Township gets 95%.
But in some instances, all right, and again, there's no commitment for a pilot or an abatement or anything else. My only point was that most developers will in fact raise that and will look for that, all right, if it goes towards the viability of the project. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. It's usually a negotiating point on their behalf.
Is it ever used for commercial or industrial?
Yeah.
But look at the proportion, like for instance, on Route 3 in your own Clifton. Well, it's Clifton, your own Roche property consideration. It's on a highway, it's common that it would be used for commercial activity and that it might be granted there inward, inside the interior of a town, say like Belleville. It isn't sitting on a highway directly where you're going to have roadside accommodations commercially. It's used primarily for residential. You see it in most towns, formerly Moncler, Nutley yourself. Those, when you use that for residential, you have to increase population of your workforce. It goes by population density, of which we are 35,000 inside 3.2 square miles that includes a mile of golf course. Work that out. You've got a major density issue with a road, with a township infrastructure in it. They can't handle that residential, but it seems as though that's what all the developers seem to want. They wanna convert industrial land or commercial land for residential purposes, which we are laboring under the weight of the salaries, pensions and benefits net. That is what has driven our taxes to where they've gone. So if you were to use a pilot for anything other, for residential, it is a disservice to the township in terms of any dreams of grandeur that you will benefit financially as a township from bringing in additional residential.
I don't think anyone has any dreams of grandeur, all right? And it's an opinion. It's an opinion that some folk have and it's something that some developers are looking for. But again, whatever the jurisdiction is, needs to evaluate that and see how that benefits their jurisdiction in the best way possible. So sometimes it works, it makes the development work, other times it doesn't. And when it doesn't, it shouldn't happen. But what it does, it's better to have a pilot, and I'm not speaking for or against it, but in some instances, rather than have a piece of land lay fallow for 20 years generating zero, sometimes it makes sense to at least listen.
Hold on, generating zero? You might be referring to the English.
It's only land value, it's only land value.
Well, but only, only you've got 23.7 acres generating more than a half a million a year in taxes. That ain't nothing.
Well, depending on what you look at, but you would look from a business perspective, okay? We look to maximize, all right, our taxes, all right? Again, there's always a compatibility issue, all right, as to what fits and what doesn't fit. So common sense needs to prevail, careful evaluation needs to prevail. And at the end of the day, when this is all presented to the governing body, they ultimately make their decision.
Careful consideration is a definite.
Very careful consideration, absolutely.
You'll hear that. Okay, just a couple of quick things. I heard earlier that you might be considering Walnut Street, my street, which is basically a dried-up riverbed at this point. It's no longer a street, but it has suffered tremendously from water breaks. Unfortunately, this last quick flash cold, it didn't. And that was greatly appreciated because we had two last year. So I mean, I am very much, would love to see and have been advocating for my street and our neighbors, who I think Mr. Rovell may have received a petition on because I had a neighbor come by and sign it. Yeah, okay, great. But the idea is, yeah, there's people all over the block that want the same thing, it's not just me. So the idea though, if we don't deal with the water pressure, and I'm down at the end of the block next to the last house, many years back now, the house next to me caught fire and burned. The hydrant at the end of the block was incapable of producing the pressure necessary to put a hose on the fire. They had to go all the way down to Belleville Avenue, which I'm sure it took valuable time. So we've got to address, before they know water on the fire. So the idea is that we've got to address these fire hydrants that simply don't work any longer or breaking. And I'm very much in agreement that if you do anything, please, consider that first because our water pressure is critical to our lives. The reservoir property, we recently put in and modernized the area where the pressure valve was recently reinstalled to prevent breakouts by holding back excess pressure when the time was right. That was a big thing with our last town manager and the council. Seemed to work well. However, it's leaking. And I've seen underground pictures, huge manifolds of water transition through that property, allow linkages to other systems. But in installing that new valve, obviously, it's like going under an old plumbing sink. When you replace one thing, something else breaks. So I see that that's leaking steadily. I assume we're gonna have some sort of a plan to look at that.
You talking about the one on Jerome?
Jerome and reservoir.
There was a sump, I guess, that they put in there that Harris was telling us about that evidently is pumping out and they should actually redirect it. So I know Tom's been looking at that.
Okay, because that's freezing up, so I'll knock down, somebody skid it off, knock down a sign.
I'll check with Mr. Harris and Mr. Esposito to get the status of where that's at.
Also, on the north end of Cortland, we've got several storm sewers that have collapsed. And they've now lost, you know, all along a series of blocks in and around Little, going down to Bella Vista. They're really dangerous. There's holes around them now, obviously, pressure has washed them out and our underground few that are working, I see some are growing trees out of them, so I know. They're not functioning. And this is a very critical area of the town where we get a lot of flooding. I've seen 36-inch manholes get blown off and turned into geysers from the amount of pressure that heads east through Belleville, having fixed all their water problems in Moncler and Bloomfield and then all of a sudden, we can't do anymore in Belleville. We seem to run out of money or desire to improve the destination of all those improvements west of us. So hopefully, there'll be some advocating in terms of modernizing, widening our system to get this out and drain that valley. That's it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mayor of Rose, 95 Bell Street. I just was listening that you can have another resolution on advertising for a manager's position.
That's correct.
I would hope, just my opinion, that you would wait till after the May elections because you have four council seats that are up to May and may not have a change in governing bodies. Only reason I'm bringing that up is if there is a change, you never know, allow the new council members to be allowed to pick a manager instead of saying, hey, this is who you stuck with. It's only my opinion. If I would just hope, wait till May. Excuse me?
You never stuck with a manager.
But we know that. That's it.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mary Higgins, 148 Brighton Avenue. I have a question for the council members regarding Mauro Tucci's contract that you approved, including 28 vacation days and 15 sick days. Could you tell me how many hours are in one sick day?
How many hours?
All right, what, for example, God forbid Mr. Tucci wakes up and says, I don't feel good, calls in for a sick day.
Yesterday.
All right, how many hours would that be?
Yesterday.
How many hours would that be in one sick day?
Seven hours.
Thank you very much, seven hours. All right, so there's seven hours in a sick day, I assume also in a vacation day, seven hours? Thank you, Mr. Tucci, thank you. Okay, so sick days and vacation days are usually predicated on the number of hours per day in a work week. If you could so generously allocate sick and vacation days for seven hours a day, why couldn't you stipulate the number of work hours in the contract?
We could, but I believe that the town manager is working more than 25 hours anyhow. That's what you're getting at.
I'm not getting at that, I'm just asking a question.
Well, I'll answer that.
Well, thank you. Mr. Tucci can state how many hours he works, but that would not stand up in a court of law because that would be hearsay. No one is monitoring him. How many hours? Is anybody monitoring him?
The town manager doesn't punch in any household, it'd be very difficult to monitor.
It would be very difficult to monitor how many hours of work. Okay. How many hours, for example, were spent on cutting costs to save taxpayers' money? How many hours conversely were spent in meetings with developers, politicians, contractors and others who I might say may not represent the best interests of the Belleville taxpayers? The contract as it stands absolves Mr. Tucci. Mr. Tucci, this isn't your fault, this is something you were handed. From working even one hour a week, since we, the taxpayers, are paying an exorbitant amount of $139,500 a year, a 24/7 car that Mr. Tucci can drive to his other paid positions, 28 vacation days, 15 sick days for unstated hours.
Just speak to the county, you're up to.
Well, you know what, maybe they can't hear me. Can you hear me? She's a bright, 100%. Please, please, this is my concluding sentence. Stop using that as your open checkbook for highly irresponsible and legally questionable misallocation of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mr. Mulver?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion, move the consent agenda. Yeah, number four.
Four? What's that, Ray?
Three, wants to do local.
Three, four and seven?
Three, four and seven.
Three, four and seven. Very good. Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mr. Mulver?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number three, move it?
Second.
I just wanted to give a little late what I said before on the Sillawah courthouse. I'm happy that we are going to renovate the Sillawah courthouse and I know that will, you know, do a good job and the firm, I'm sure will be happy. That's all I want to say on that.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mr. Mulver?
Yes.
Yes.
Move resolution number four, just avoid.
I want a table.
Table?
Yeah, I want a table. Yeah, I mean, one of the things, we have meetings going on right now between the Board of Ed and the Township Manager that hopefully, we're gonna come up with some shared services to, you can explain a little bit more. I know you've made some invitations and people have been in.
Yeah, we've been trying to connect with the Board of Ed. I've got conversations with Mr. Egan and Mr. Tom Coke. We're gonna get together to see how we can maximize the equipment that we have and personnel that we have so we can do things a bit more efficiently and hopefully we can save some
Quick call of all on the table.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mr. Mulver?
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Resolution number seven?
Seven, there was only one bid, so I'm going to, you know, so we, we've got to move.
You have to move it.
We have to move it. Make a motion.
Councilmember Cosrally?
No.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Rovell?
No.
Mr. Mulver?
No.
Mayor Hill?
Under new bills, you say make a motion for a resolution authorizing advertisement